I'd like to call to order the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, May 7th, 2025. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to public participation on agenda items only today, Mr. Haggerty has an update.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
As you know, I will not be administering today's board meeting and Vince Peace will be doing so instead. And I appreciate the opportunity to publicly explain why I am recusing myself from today's meeting. Following the devastating fire at the Broad Street Market in 2023 and the resulting financial crisis faced by the organization, I was asked to volunteer and join the Market's Board of Directors to help stabilize the organization. While serving in the unpaid position as Chair of the Board at the Market, in an effort to raise funds to help with the financial recovery, I applied for numerous grants from a variety of entities in public, private, and philanthropic sectors. One of the grants I submitted an application for in conjunction with the city of Harrisburg, which owns the buildings and land that make up the Broad Street Market, was a Dauphin County Gaming Grant. I submitted the application on September 26, 2024, and provided a presentation about the application in front of the Dauphin County Gaming Advisory Board on January 7, 2025. These actions all took place prior to my receiving an offer of employment from Dauphin County, from the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners on January 17, 2025. Upon accepting the offer of employment to join the county's workforce, I disclosed the submission of the Market's Gaming Grant application and the potential conflict of interest my employment with the county would pose. I also submitted an abstention memo to the Board of Commissioners and Solicitors Office upon accepting the offer of employment in which I requested that I abstain from any discussion or decision-making relating to the grant application. I also publicly disclosed this potential conflict of interest in a prior Board of Commissioners meeting. Through my three months of employment with the county, Vince Peace has served as the designated responsible for coordinating gaming grant awards with the Advisory Board, Economic Development Staff, and the Board of Commissioners. And throughout that time, I have not discussed any gaming grants, the Market's application, or any others at all with anyone at the county and have physically left the room anytime gaming discussions might be brought up. Once made aware by Vince that the Commissioners were prepared to consider gaming grant applications this week, I recused myself from all meetings relating to this week's agenda and in fact have not even seen a copy of it in any form, draft or otherwise, even now that it is public. I've not participated in any of the usual briefings for the Commissioners relating to the agenda this week, and I do not actually even know whether the application I submitted alongside the city of Harrisburg is even on the agenda today, because I haven't seen it. But out of an abundance of caution and to avoid any appearance of a conflict of interest, I'm recusing myself entirely from today's meeting and will turn things over to Vince. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haggerty. Also want to let everyone know that we do have an overflow room in the event that this room reaches capacity. And we'd prefer that if possible, our staff that's not required to be here be the first to cycle out to ensure that the public and certainly any others are able to get in the room. With that, we will move on to public participation on agenda items only. Just a reminder, this is agenda items only and it's a three-minute cap and we are being livestreamed. Morning, ladies.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ernestine Kearse, K-E-A-R-S-E, and I am from Stilton, but I was born and raised in Harrisburg. I am the president of the Coalition of Black Trade Unionists Harrisburg Chapter. We call CBTU. Along with me is one of my executive board members, Ruby Dodd, who is joining me also today at this meeting. Harrisburg Chapter is small, but we are growing very quickly. The Coalition of Black Trade Unionists consists of seventy-five international and national unions with more than sixty-two chapters and still growing across the country and Canada. They have been in existence since 1972. Our mission, Harrisburg Chapter, is to build a bridge between union trade labor and black community by helping to improve economic development, employment trade opportunities, educating our community about the importance of voting, and just being a voice for the black people. The Coalition of Black Trades Unionists Harrisburg Chapter was chartered May 22, 1975, and this year we're celebrating our fiftieth birthday. So with that, we are having a, celebrating our anniversary, October the 24th, at the Best Western in Union Deposit. We want to thank you for your continued support of our organization and we invite you and anyone else who would like to participate with our event and join us in our event. I do have flyers available and I will also be leaving some at the front desk. So again, on behalf of the Coalition of Black Trades Unionists, CBTU, Harrisburg Chapter, we thank you for your continued support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you all. My name is Deana Janghdari, J-A-N-G-D-H-A-R-I, and I am the Director of Event Operations at the Civic Club of Harrisburg. I'm here today with our executive board member, Mrs. Ruby Dodd. For the Civic Club is a hundred and twenty-seven-year-old organization founded in 1898. And our mission lies in the heart of commitment, civility, service, and preservation. And on behalf of the president, who couldn't be here today, Katrina Baltimore, we really want to thank you. We want to thank you for your continued support. I just got off the phone today with the gentleman that is creating our toprary guarding goddess, the first of its kind in central Pennsylvania, and she will be arriving sometime next week. So I'm here to invite you all to come when we do the unveiling and I will let you know of that. It's going to be a beautiful sight in our beautiful garden. And we're really just excited about the opportunity for your continued support. So that's why I'm here today and I really thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public participation on agenda items? Good morning, Pam.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pamela Parsons. In looking at this copious agenda and the gaming grants, I was heartened to see the amount of money that is going to volunteer fire companies and to infrastructure projects in upper Dauphin County, our more rural parts of the county. I was saddened to see that some of the grants on here are pending federal grant matching, which most likely will not happen. I'm also, I noticed the amount of increased requests for cameras and other surveillance equipment. And I would just like to remind us that while cameras and surveillance equipment give us the illusion of safety, they do not, in fact, make us more safe. Only addressing the root causes of crime makes us more safe. And finally, I'd just like to note the number of organizations that I found that are related back to Christian nationalist churches and who have very discriminative policies, anti-LGBTQ policies. And I know that is not, that is something that is discouraged to comment on, but I felt it important to bring to light. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam. Anyone else for comments on agenda items only? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion for the approval of April 16th and April 23rd meeting minutes?
So moved.
From Workshop and Legislative. Moved by Commissioner Priest. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
We will also approve the minutes for Salary Board, April 23rd. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Bateman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. All those, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Executive sessions held between meetings, Mr. Peace.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
On May 6th, Commissioners held an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding consideration on the purchase and lease of real property, real estate taxes, and matters of public safety. In addition to the Solicitors Office, Director of Tax Assessment and Tax Claim Greg Taylor, Director of Human Services Randy Egger, and Budget and Finance Director Christopher Davis were present.
Any questions of Mr. Peace? Hearing none. We'll move on to our directors and guest portion. This week, we honor the dedication and sacrifice of our correctional officers, individuals who serve on the front lines of public safety with courage, professionalism, and integrity. Their work is often unseen, but it is vital. From maintaining security to supporting rehabilitation and reentry efforts, correction officers play a critical role showing up each day to do one of the most challenging jobs in public service. While Correction Officers Week is a time to recognize and celebrate their contribution, we must also commit to doing better by them every week of the year through adequate staffing, safety measures, mental health support, and fair compensation. I'm excited to welcome Warden Briggs, Director Bay, and maybe even more from our administration up as we celebrate National Correction Officers Week here at the Commissioners' meeting. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to talk a little bit about our profession. You pretty much said everything that I wanted to say. We all know that law enforcement is pretty much a thankless job and certainly corrections is an arm of law enforcement. On a daily, we see our officers wear many different hats, from child counselors to relationship counselors to, in some cases, policing. And oh, by the way, there are also corrections officers. We see them perform their duties with the core values that we look for in people: service, honor, integrity, respect, trust, courage, duty. All those are embodied in the profession that we all stand for and we're recognizing today. So again, thank you for taking the opportunity to allow us to recognize the profession of corrections. I don't use the term guards, because we're not guards, we're corrections officers.
Thank you. Yeah, the saying, you have to be built different to work in corrections. What's that mean? You know, the mental toll between not judging an individual for what they're there for, treating everybody with respect to administration, rolling out a lot of different policies that sometimes don't align with your personal beliefs, but you got to check your personal beliefs at the door. And we're asking them to do a lot more post-COVID with less staff, and they're carrying out that mission. Working in three different county facilities, I can tell you that Dauphin County is the toughest one. It's not an easy job. It's not an easy job and they come in and they do it daily, twenty-four seven, holidays, weekends, you name it, they're doing it. So just want to thank them, I know actions speak louder than words, so we want to do better moving forward. Showing how much we appreciate this week is just one step towards that, so thank you.
Thank you Warden Briggs. Commissioner Hartwick.
Yeah, I, obviously great deal of respect for correctional officers. And it's like a lot of levels of jobs that are in public service, particularly even more dangerous, that you never hear anything, good feedback. You're constantly working in an environment where, you know, the idea of criticism and the idea of sort of cameras and the way that you operate is under constant supervision and surveillance and you're being asked to sort of employ new de-escalation techniques, learn things like CIT, so to better understand behavior health responses, to ensure that you are safe and the inmates that we are charged to serve are safe, and to play continuing roles, because many times you have an opportunity to change real lives. And I suspect deep down underneath sort of the protection side, there's a lot of folks out here that truly believe in making a difference for people who have struggled and made mistakes. And, and that opportunity to change lives, I know, is the core of your motivation. I know you put your positions at risk, your lives at risk, your family struggles. We want to make sure you're taking care of your mental health too, and ensuring that, you know, the difficult job that you face, you're not alone. And those kinds of considerations need to be made for people on the front lines. We want to say we respect and honor and appreciate your work and the changes that have been made out there. I mean, when you take a look at statistics, I've seen a significant amount of reduction in hands-on level of activity. We saw sort of a reduction in, you know, the raids that have to happen, that you have to maintain control of the facility. But I think learning new tools and ways to handle it without force has been a true transformation in Dauphin County. And I want to thank you for your willingness to, to move in that direction and also be a leader in trying to promote that change. Ever since the pandemic has been here, your operation doesn't close. I mean, it's around the clock, whether, you know, people are sick or at home, we need to make sure we are staffed and staffed in a way that's going to provide protection to the inmates and to our community and to our staff. You have not failed us in showing up and we should not be failing you for honoring you for your level of service. So we sincerely appreciate you and proud to join my colleagues in honoring you today.
Thank you. Commissioner Priest. Yeah, thank you to both my colleagues and I want to give a special thank you to the two of you, Director Bay and Warden Briggs, for the tremendous work that you've done since you've come aboard here at the county. This is a very difficult job and I want to say a special thank you to the COs who are in the back for what they do. It's been mentioned, it's a twenty-four seven, three sixty-five operation. You don't shut down, no matter what happens outside, you're still running the operation inside, providing that safe and secure environment. It's been said before that when the state hospital ground shut down, they renamed it Dauphin County Prison. I believe over fifty percent of the population in there now has mental health issues. And that's something that a prison's not supposed to be doing. But you're doing it, you're dealing with it, you're providing that environment for the individuals who are in there, keeping the staff safe, the incarcerated individuals safe, as well as our visitors safe. And we can't thank you enough for the great work you have done, are doing, and will continue to do on behalf of the residents. And as the ward pointed out, we're going to continue to improve. You have to keep improving, you're under a spotlight all the time out there. And can't thank you enough for the great work that you're doing on behalf of us and our residents.
Can I interject?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention the other staffs that, staff inside the facility that compose corrections. And we also want to thank, you know, our treatment staff, our maintenance staff, because without them, the COs couldn't do their job. It is truly, truly a team effort. And while most of the focus, it seems to be today on the officers, we cannot forget our treatment and maintenance staff as well, because they are an integral part of the team.
That's great, thank you. Mr. Priest, do you mind coming up and delivering this? This is a proclamation from the, from the governor of Pennsylvania, Josh Shapiro, declaring this week here in Pennsylvania Corrections Officer, Correctional Officer Week. I also want to allow Controller Bateman, who is the chair of our prison board, to share a few words. And then I've also given her a prock to read on behalf of the commissioners.
All right, thank you Commissioner. As the chair of the prison board, I've learned a lot and it is a hard job. I try to meet with the COs and all of the other staff there and it is a job that many of us probably could not do. And, you know, I'm deeply appreciative of what they do every day. And they've done it under significant hard circumstances. They're required to work overtime, a three, three times per pay period. And that's, you know, that's asking them a lot. They're giving up a lot of their time with their families, they're giving up a lot of their time, you know, just being able to decompress. And, you know, we truly appreciate everything that they do and I know it's not an easy job. And, you know, we just want to thank you and I know, you know, as the warden said, this Corrections Week is just one step in the direction that we would like to take to try and make sure that you know how appreciated you are. So thank you. Do you want to make comments before?
No more comments, let's go.
All right, so the proclamation, we, I should say they, the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners, welcome this opportunity to honor and thank the correctional employees who devote their days, nights, and lives to supporting public safety, executing justice, and upholding a safe, secure, and humane environment in correctional facilities in Dauphin County and across the Commonwealth. Whereas Pennsylvania's correctional system is the oldest in the nation and over time has pioneered many new innovations to advance rehabilitation and maximize safety. Whereas more than thirty-one thousand highly skilled and dedicated corrections professionals across the state work around the clock to provide safe, secure, and efficient-run facilities. Whereas the, in Dauphin County, one hundred and eighty-seven correctional staff, twenty-one treatment staff, and more than sixty-three support staff keep the county prison running every hour of each and every day. Whereas we recognize the many caring, compassionate counselors, clergy, treatment specialists, administrators, volunteers, and officers at Dauphin County Prison for their presence and professionalism. Therefore, we join the two hundred and eighty-six thousand residents of Dauphin County in acknowledging all employees and volunteers for their tireless efforts to promote public safety and security in our correctional facilities. We applaud them for the demanding and often heroic work they do. And in grateful tribute to their dedicated service, we do hereby join the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in proudly proclaiming May fourth through May tenth, twenty twenty-five, to be National Correctional Employees Week in Dauphin County.
Bay. This time I'd like to invite up Mrs. Bellamy and for our presentation of the twenty twenty-five gaming grants.
Hello. Thank you, good to see you. I'll get past you on.
Morning. Morning Brett.
Good morning commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
Latoya Winfield Bellamy of Eckerd Siemens. Have here my colleague Brett Flower with Eckerd Siemens, as well as the Director of Grant, excuse me, the Grants Coordinator from the county's Department of Community and Economic Development, Brooke Etchavaria. And we are here today to present the recommendations from the Dauphin County Gaming Advisory Board, which is chaired by Mr. David Craig, along with the other members Larry Cooney, Betsy McBride, and Matt Tinnell. Thank you so much for having us today. While, you know, as you know from past experience, it's a lengthy presentation. We will not go over each and every grant that's being recommended, but there are some things that we definitely want to highlight and point out to you. First being a little background on the local share gaming program. Under the Gaming Act, the Hollywood Casino is required to share its slot machine revenue with the host municipality, East Hanover Township, as well as the host county, Dauphin County. And so local share assessment is how the county's local share gaming program came about. The county's local share also includes a modest amount that is directed to Lebanon and school counties based on their location, being contiguous or adjacent to the facility located in Dauphin County. That is a total of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars every year that goes from the county's unrestricted grant funds that they received to those two other counties. Next slide please. The county also receives a portion of Hollywood Casino's interactive gaming revenue, or iGaming as we call it. One percent from that type of gameplay comes to the county under their local share program. In terms of administration of the local share gaming program, according to the law or under the Gaming Act, the county's local share gaming grant program is to be administered through its Economic Development or Redevelopment Authority. Further, the county, which follows the law, has designated or created the Gaming Advisory Board, where they appoint members to review the applications and make recommendations to the commissioners. And then ultimately, you all, the Board of Commissioners, approve how the funds are awarded. When we talk about the local share funds, it's two percent of the assessment is what comes to the county from the slot machine revenue and then the one percent from the iGaming revenue that I previously mentioned. In addition to those funds, the Hollywood Casino is required to pay an annual operation license fee of ten million dollars in order to operate the facility. A portion of those funds also come to the county. To summarize, it's broken down where a certain portion goes to East Hanover Township in Dauphin County, the host municipality, as well as a small fixed portion to East Hanover Township in Lebanon County. And then the remainder comes to Dauphin County for their local share that they are entitled to. The local share program that was created under the Gaming Act also highlights that the play that takes place at Hollywood Casino is instrumental in creating property tax relief. And so when we look at that on, I think we're on slide eight, by law, the grants are not for property tax relief. However, they do help to keep those types of things like property taxes down in the municipalities that are impacted by gaming and or located in Dauphin County. You should know that the property tax relief, as certified by the Commonwealth Secretary of Budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, was stated to be nine hundred million dollars available for statewide property tax relief. When we look at the gaming trends at the Hollywood Casino and what is referred to as the gross terminal revenue, which is the revenue that comes in through slot machine play, in twenty twenty-four, the GTR was a hundred and thirty-five million based on slot machine play. That was down slightly from the prior year, a little over seven percent. But as we look at the iGaming revenue, or the gross interactive gaming revenue, that totaled eight hundred and twenty million for twenty twenty-four, which was up more than, or yeah, more than fifteen percent over twenty twenty-three. And so the facility continues to generate and increase income year over year through iGaming taking place in Dauphin County. And so when we look at all of the, the total local share funds that come through to the county annually for twenty twenty-four, that total was a little over nineteen million, which continues, or has continued to increase since twenty twenty-one when iGaming came online. And just a brief, a little more background before we move into the recommendations. Since twenty twenty-one, the program guidelines for the local share grant program have recommended that non-contiguous municipalities that are applying for grants not request more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a grant cycle and non-municipal applicants not request more than seventy-five thousand dollars in a grant cycle. Applicants are still able to request more, however, they are asked to provide justification as to why they should receive more than the recommended amount. And that was implemented in order to, in an effort to maximize the reach of the grant program for the applicants. In terms of the number of applications received in the current grant cycle, it was about two hundred and fifty-five, right about the same as last year. And so the number of applications has remained steady over the last couple of years.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
When you reference program guidelines, those are our program guidelines, correct? That's not law necessarily.
Correct.
That's our programs guidelines. Is there a, would that be something that I could just get? I think I saw it last year around this time, obviously, you know, once a year, our minds are very on gaming. Would that be something I could just get a copy of?
Absolutely, and they're posted online, well, they are when the program is open.
Okay.
But absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wish I had a copy with me. And so you can see there the number of applications that came in this year. So when we talk about applicants, the Gaming Act lays out or identifies who is eligible to apply for the program to receive grants. And so the host municipality, East Hanover Township, is automatically eligible to apply, as are the five contiguous, so the municipalities that surround East Hanover, which include Dairy, Middle Paxton, Rush, South Hanover, and West Hanover Townships. And then the Gaming Act also identifies Dauphin County, the host county, as being eligible to apply. Within the county's program guidelines, in order to allow additional applicants or have a broader reach with the gaming funds, the concept of having a sponsor that's eligible allows other municipalities in the county, as well as non-municipal applicants, to apply. In the current grant cycle, there were some changes in the program guidelines last year, which resulted in the application deadline being pushed back about a month. And so that has something to do with why we're just here today in May. And so the application deadline in the current grant cycle was October first, that was about a month behind where we would typically be. And as a result, instead of having hearings in November, the hearings were held in January of this year. And then for the additional applicants that could not get a hearing based on, you know, the number of time slots available and the dates scheduled for hearings, there was a public meeting in February, which would have typically taken place in December. And so with that, here we are, the Gaming Advisory Board met on Monday, May fifth, and made their recommendations. And we are here to move them forward to the Board of Commissioners. Board of Commissioners. With the recommendations that are being put forth today, there were some principles that were identified, particularly prioritizing infrastructure projects, those ready to go. We, within the program guidelines, municipalities are asked to rank the applications that they submit, as well as those that they are co-applicants on. And then also you will see fire and emergency services applicants are being recommended today. In their applications, they're asked to identify their service areas, whether they have mutual aid agreements, if they're requesting apparatus, you know, whether or not there are redundancies, and how they will use or benefit from those requests. And so when we get to the recommendations, you'll see that they're color-coded based on the categories that the projects fall within. And so we have infrastructure, human services, emergency, health and public safety, public interest, and transportation. And then some projects actually cross several categories or more than one, and so we would label them as being multiple categories. And so first, we have the host and contiguous recommendations. I think there are about 18 of those, for a total of $1,876,189. East Hanover Township is listed first, and then you'll see the other host, excuse me, the other contiguous, as well as if they sponsored any applications. And they can sponsor applicants directly because they are eligible under the Gaming Act to be able to apply for and receive a grant application. Next, we have recommendations that include municipalities and municipal-related services. So that's where you'll find municipalities in Dolphin County, authorities, as well as fire companies, court administration, and other municipal-related services. I would like to point out that there are a few conditions that are being recommended with some of the applications, particularly under the municipal section. On slide 28, there is a condition recommended for Pembroke Borough. They're requesting funds to prepare a community park master site plan. There's a condition there to match the local share gaming grant if that award is approved. And the total being recommended for the municipal and municipal service applicants is $5,732,193. That's about 70 recommendations in that portion coming from the Gaming Advisory Board. And then in the next section of recommendations, we have the other applicants largely made up of nonprofits. And there are a number there, probably about six or so, that have conditions recommended with their grant awards. You will see on slide 34, the Broad Street Market Alliance is being recommended to receive a grant in the amount of $75,000 to support their continued operations. That recommendation is conditioned upon renegotiating their lease with the City of Harrisburg, who owns the property where the Broad Street Market is located. There's also a condition recommended for Handel's Helping Hand Foundation. That's on slide 38. That project is an affordable apartment units project located on the 1600 block of Marcus Street in the City of Harrisburg. It's being recommended to receive $75,000. There's a recommended condition that those grant funds be used for construction costs. If you go to slide 41, the Left Out Organization Program, also called Loop, which runs after-school programs at the Allison Hill Community Center in the City of Harrisburg, it's being conditioned upon their $6,500 recommendation be used for CPR kits. If you go to slide 44, Off the Streets Middletown, that applicant submitted an application requesting funds to assist unhoused individuals with security deposits, household items, and a truck to assist with delivering those items. It is recommended that they receive $35,000. It has been determined that the condition listed there would unreasonably restrict the use of the funds for the project, particularly to be able to purchase a truck. And so it is being recommended that that condition be taken off of these recommendations that are being proposed today.
I believe that's triple I on our agenda. We'll get there when we get there. I just want to make sure I make a note of it.
Yes. On that same slide, the Pennsylvania Council of Churches, which is a facility located in Lower Paxton Township, and has a number of organizations located in the building. They are requesting funds for a roof repair. They have a very extensive roof on that building, and to initiate a new food pantry. That recommendation is contingent upon receipt of a FEMA award, and they're being recommended to receive $75,000 from a local share grant program. On the next slide, we have the Roller Nation Foundation. They're being recommended to receive $19,000 to replace their public address and sound system, conditioned upon the athletic complex being in operation for the fall of 2026. And then finally, on slide 50, the United Disability Services Foundation. They're requesting service dogs and other items. The recommendation is that they receive $6,000 to provide service, a service dog for two waitlist clients. That would be conditioned upon those dogs going to families in Dolphin County. And so the recommendation there is that condition would be placed in the grant agreement. The total amount being recommended for the other applicants is $2,391,684. And somehow, we found ourselves with 85 cents in that category. But the total amount being recommended is $10,066.85. The recommendation coming from the Gaming Advisory Board took into consideration that last year, there was, or the last grant cycle, there was an effort to sort of spread the funds to more applicants, which resulted in like a sprinkle here and a sprinkle there. And so this year, you will see that there are less applicants being recommended, but for a greater amount, with the thought of, you know, putting them in a better position to be able to complete projects. And so I want to clarify that the amount that is available for the restricted grant program or municipal grant program is $9,716, excuse me, 9,7, excuse me, $9,716,096, with the recommendation being at $10,066.85. If the Commissioners were to approve the recommendations from the Gaming Advisory Board, that would require an additional $283,970.85 from the unrestricted local share funds or discretionary funds. You will also find in the presentation the applications that were submitted that are not being recommended for an award today. And so they are listed on the remaining, or the next three or four slides. There are 57 applicants not being recommended for funding today. Several of them have been previously funded for similar or the same projects, or they may have submitted an additional request that is being funded in this grant cycle. And then we did want to highlight a few projects, if the Commissioners are okay with that. And so the first one we want to spotlight is the Bread Coin Foundation, which was launched in the capital region in early 2022. They started with two local vendors and were able to grow the network to 11 vendors in the Harrisburg area. And what Bread Coin is, is it's a really innovative tool that connects those in the community to be able to get food with dignity and to also support local businesses at the same time. It benefits those that may have, may not have access to a kitchen, or be able to identify places to get good quality food and meet their needs. Those that use Bread Coin, anyone can use it, and everyone's encouraged to use it. But it's a helpful resource, as I mentioned, that is distributed by local community partners and food vendors. They may organize events or directly from their brick and mortar location. And it also works to create points of connection for those who are, who may be food insecure. And so we wanted to point out that applicant that's being recommended for a grant today in the amount of $15,000. We also wanted to highlight or spotlight the Swatara Township Ivy Ridge Park. A public recreation project is being recommended to receive $218,000. The township is looking to address a public need, to have diverse recreational facilities in low to moderate-income communities, and also a variety of offerings at the park. Next to that, we have Samba or Susquehanna Area Mountain Bike Association being recommended to receive $59,747 with regard to their trail building and maintenance and connector project. That particular project will allow them to have a quicker response time for emergency trail work, to maintain safety with pairs of volunteers, to create a sustainable and environmentally friendly approach, and to improve safety for their trail users. They'll also be able to implement some ADA compliance upgrades and increase access and health benefits. And the particular project or trail is located in, or between the Hershey Medical Center trails and the Eschenhauer Trail in Derry Township. And next, we wanted to spotlight the various requests and recommendations for EMS and ambulance services, particularly in the upper end of Dolphin County, involving the Halifax Area Ambulance and Rescue Association, the Millersburg Area Ambulance Association, as well as the Williamstown Area EMS organization. They are being recommended to receive grant funds to assist with remounting and/or acquiring ambulance equipment or vehicles. Particularly, the Millersburg Area Association is looking for a bariatric ambulance, which is specially designed and equipped to transport patients who may require larger or sturdier equipment, and provide care that a traditional ambulance would not be able to do. Halifax Area Ambulance would be remounting the chassis, and the Williamstown Area would be acquiring a new apparatus. And then finally, in the area of trades or workforce development, we have recommendations to the Elevator Constructors Local 59 at their joint apprenticeship training center, as well as the Harrisburg Electricians Joint Apprenticeship and Training Committee, both being recommended to receive grants in the amount of $75,000 to upgrade their facilities. And the specifics related to those upgrades are identified on the slide. In total, you've already heard the recommendation is for $2 million, excuse me, $10,066.85. It's important to note that 76% of the recommendations are for municipalities or municipal services that include the host contiguous and all others. Of that amount, 25% is going to the host and contiguous municipalities. You will see a breakdown of the categories that I mentioned earlier. If the recommendations are approved, this is sort of how it would be distributed in terms of infrastructure, human services, emergency services, health and public safety, public interest, transportation, and multiple categories. When the applicants submit their applications, they are asked to provide information related to whether or not their project will create or preserve any jobs, and also what other funding sources they would be contributing to the project, whether they're in hand or pending, or they plan to apply, that sort of thing. So with the recommendations being made today, based on the information received from applicants, more than $37 million could potentially be leveraged within the county if these awards are approved, as well as maintaining, preserving, or creating jobs to the tune of more than 4,000 positions. And that concludes the presentation of the recommendations from the Gaming Advisory Board.
Thank you, Latoya.
You're welcome.
The thoroughness of this report's very, very helpful. I did have a question just from the public's perspective. I want to make sure they understand, and maybe Brooke would be best to answer this. You know, when someone gets a gaming grant, what happens next? And I think, and I think I want to just emphasize, like, it's not like we write you a check, hand it to you, and you go use it. Let's talk a little bit about, you know, how this money gets spent, how it's used. I want to pull that mic a little closer.
Once the awards are approved and we receive an official notification from the Board of Commissioners, the agreements are drafted and fully signed by the Commissioners and the awardees. At that time, the applicants are instructed that they can submit invoices for us to pay directly, or they can seek a reimbursement for project-related expenses. To do that, you would need to show that you have the invoice and a paid receipt, clear check. So the funds do not just get released to these applicants for them to use as they see fit. We're either paying a project-related expense directly, or reimbursing them for something that was already paid.
Thank you, Brooke, for that clarification. Any questions of my colleagues?
I just want to thank the members of the Gaming Advisory Board, you know, that they spend a lot of time doing this at such a high rate of salary, which is zero, and their efforts in trying to review, sit through hearings, and significantly place their time and energy into these recommendations. And from what I've seen, both from the recommendations of the Gaming Advisory Board to what's been relayed to us, they've remained pretty consistent. So I think that's, you know, that's sort of how we would like to keep this process going. I mean, while we provide final approval, we'd like that evaluation process to be thorough and come, coming to the position where we have considerations made by a board of independent folks that represent those municipalities. So the, the other piece to this is, I always want to make sure we're clarifying property tax relief, and you kind of went over it. I think it was an important component to this. There's so many people that say, well, $10 million, Dolphin County's in a difficult financial situation. Why didn't you just use that for your tax revenue? These dollars cannot be used for tax revenue replacement. So that, that's got to be very clear. By statute, the dollars that we are dealing with today have to be distributed in a local share process in which you're seeing play out in front of us at a public meeting. So there's this oftentimes reaction, and rightfully so, by the public saying, we want to put every dollar towards that particular purpose. And these dollars are not allowed to be used for that purpose. The good news to that is the other portion, the state's portion, appears to be rising at 900 million, which will be used as a part of the structure for the creation of this gaming, to provide property tax reductions. The challenge with that and the taxpayers is taxes for school districts and other places go up pretty high, so residents very rarely see relief. But without this mechanism, there would be no ability to provide that relief. But that fund is completely separate and determined by the Budget Office and the Commonwealth versus this particular process that we have here. So the last thing I'll say is both leveraging of the monies and the commitment to public safety is very much in line with, I know, the priorities that I've seen from this board. We have great first responders, and even though this might not provide direct property tax relief, those municipalities that are, would have otherwise had used tax revenue to pay for equipment, and volunteer fire companies aren't doing it chicken barbecues. They're not doing it with, you know, trying to do these little fundraisers. And almost invariably, they'd have to go to local taxpayers and say, hey, we, we need new equipment to keep our community safe. This particular pot of money and the mechanism to try to get it to those people who run towards danger and are committed to this many times in a volunteer basis, need to be working with operational equipment. And I'm grateful that this process has indicated, and specifically going towards those first responders. And I think it's a very well-run and very well-put forth level of priority. So thank you for your work and staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartwick. Commissioner Priest?
I'd like to echo Commissioner Hartwick's comments to a T. I do often come as well how if we didn't have the gaming dollars, this would be in the form of tax increases to our local residents and municipalities. And I think you covered everything pretty well that I was going to say. Also want to give a special thank you to Mr. Espen Shade, who also served as a member, but recently offered his resignation from that board. But all these board members provided volunteer time to come in over and over again. And I want to thank George Connor and Brooke Etchavaria for the work that they've done. Latoya? Latoya Bellamy and Brett Flower and your team. This is something that takes place over months and months and months and is a benefit to the residents of the county. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your work. Appreciate you.
Commissioner Priest, we just wanted to clarify, it was Mr. Umberger. Mr. Umberger that resigned.
Umberger, not Espen Shade. Thank you. Thank you.
This time, we'll move into Salary Board. Ms. Ryschinsky.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Personnel Packet is ready for your approval. The revisions were communicated with the board, and the Salary Board Packet has no changes.
Do I have a motion for items A, B, and C of Salary?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Controller Bateman, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion?
I just want to make one correction. The items for A and B are effective May twelfth, not May seventh.
May twelfth.
Correct.
Do I have a motion for that amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. The amendment moved by Controller Bateman, seconded, or would it be seconded by you because you made the motion?
I'll just make a quick suggestion. It's supposed to be through a friendly amendment that can be made to the original motion, and I would accept that recommendation.
Yeah, so recommendation made by Controller Bateman, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick to amend those two items to reflect, item A and B to reflect
Correct.
May twelfth as the action date of those. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. For the Personnel Packet, do I have a motion for the Personnel Packet?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion?
I just want to confirm that everything within the Personnel Packet is contained in the twenty-twenty-five budgeted amount.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Budget and Finance Director, Mr. Davis.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have no changes to the investment report that was distributed on Monday. There's also no changes to the purchase order packet that was sent out. That's ready for your vote group.
Do I have a motion for the purchase order packet?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We also had two bids we opened, I believe it was two weeks ago, for the Parks and Rec Department. The first was the Fort Hunter Park and Detweiler Park Site Construction Bid. We received one bid for four hundred seventy-one thousand five hundred dollars. For the second bid, it was the Fort Hunter Park and Detweiler Park Restroom Renovations. The total of the low bids, we had to bid this general, mechanical, and electrical. The total was two hundred sixty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars. We are recommending the board reject all of the bids. They came in double what the estimate was for the project, and they're just simply not within the budget. So circle back and see what we can do to fix that.
For clarification, does that mean we need to accept these motions or reject these motions?
I didn't believe you, I don't know that I can make a motion, so I think
Or do we need to make any motion?
Make a motion to reject.
Make a motion to reject. Okay. I'll understand a motion to reject bids from items C and D.
I'll make a motion to reject the bids based upon pricing.
Second.
Any discussion? Just want to ensure that the solicitor and the clerk, that's a fair way of putting this. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Chief Clerk's report. Mr. Priest.
Commissioners, I just have a point of clarification on a couple items. Items twelve and thirteen, they appear to be the same item, but they are not. Item twelve is a bachelor's degree program, and item thirteen is a master's degree program for Millersville, so just wanted to clarify that. And then, item twenty-five, that price that's listed is for each of those leases, so in reality, the total that I'm at, we are asking for in that quarterly payment is seven thousand four twenty-four.
Just give me that last one again, please.
Twelve and thirteen?
Yep, thirteen.
Thirteen is a master's degree program.
All right. For item twenty-five, will we need to amend that, or, since there's the number two there, do you think it's sufficient?
I'm being told by the solicitor for clarity's sake.
Okay, we'll amend it.
When we get to it. That's all I have.
Any questions of Mr. Priest? Hearing none. Solicitors' report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. Matters requiring board action today have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitors' Office for action by the board.
All right, as we head into matters requiring board action, we got quite a hefty agenda today. I'm going to request that we break these down into the headers in which they're in. So items one through thirty-three for a motion to begin with. And as recommended by the solicitor, item twenty-five should reflect seven thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars quarter.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussions? I do have just a point to make about item twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five as they reflect four vehicles being purchased. It's my understanding that our budget approved the purchase of two vehicles, but there was a little bit of a misunderstanding, and they were purchased, in essence, without approval, and we're now approving it after the fact. Mr. Priest, if you're able to speak to this a little bit, as I think it's worth noting.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. There was a miscommunication between the Sheriff's Office and the previous Risk Management Director that in the budget process, the Commissioners had awarded, or had budgeted two vehicles of the four requested from the Sheriff's Office, but it was relayed to the Sheriff's Office that all four that they were requesting were approved by the Commissioners. So then the orders were put in, and now we are, as you said, going back and correcting that issue.
Understood. With that clarity, any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, items thirty-four through thirty-eight, which reflect all of the host and contiguous, all of the local share gaming grant awards are reflected in items thirty-four through thirty-eight. I will say, the motion should also reflect the removal of conditions on triple I, I believe, off the streets of Middletown. And, yeah. I'll entertain a motion for items thirty-four through
So moved.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we are on to items thirty-nine through one-seventy-two. These reflect our tourism grant awards. I do believe we might need to pull one of these out. Correct, Commissioner?
Yes, yes, we pull item one-fifty-nine for a separate vote.
Yep.
I receive no compensation, but I do serve on that committee.
Great. So we will pull item one-fifty-nine for a separate vote. Minus item one-fifty-nine, thirty-nine through one-seventy-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item one-fifty-nine?
I'll make the motion.
I will second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Stain.
Stain. Motion carries. Onto item one-seventy-three, Board Appointments. These are appointments for our Gaming Advisory Board. Very thankful for all the work that the Gaming Advisory Board put in this year, and as we look to the future, an opportunity for some, some new individuals to enter into those roles. Do I have a motion for items one-seventy-three? Item one-seventy-three?
So moved.
I'll second.
Seconded. Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion?
Sure. I'm just liking that we're putting some first responders on here. I mean, the idea of both the police and fire now being represented on this board, I think it's appropriate and reflective of our comments today, and certainly reflective of what, what this board's priorities are. So I'm certainly excited, and the perspectives are, well.
And I just want to clarify that we are appointing four new members out of the five that currently serve. Jim Williams from East Hanover is filling a vacancy created by Keith Umberger. Tim Chateau of West Hanover is replacing Lawrence Cooney. Mr. Chateau works for Swatara Police Department, as well as the West Hanover Fire Company. And we have Patrick Leonard from Derry Township, replacing Matt Tenell from Derry Township. And Patrick Leonard is the chief of the Hershey Fire Department. And we have Michael Iverson from Swatara Township, replacing Ann Elizabeth McBride. And Mr. Iverson is involved with Swatara Emergency Responders. So we do have, as Commissioner Hartwick mentioned, the first responders joining the board, which I think is a good, a good group of people making up the five-member board.
Certainly. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now moving on to former business. We have two items under former business. I want to give the Controller an opportunity to, to speak to these two items.
Thank you, Commissioner. So before you make a motion, I just want to point out that there was an inadvertent transposition of numbers. Item one should be three of four-year. Item two should be three of three-year. And if I can answer any questions to, for these engagement letters, these are engagement letters as part of the audit process.
As this is former business, do I have any motions for items one and two?
I'll make the motion that we accept items one and two with those amendments that have been noted.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll discuss just my concern, given last week's letter that was read and this particular entity, and the lack of what seems to be a thorough investigation into, into that matter, and that's going to lead to my no vote today. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. New business. Any items for new business?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for the, this was on the agenda prior and did not pass, human services agreement with Tri-County HDC LTD to supplement a project at fifteen-twenty-one dash fifteen-twenty-three Thompson Street in the city of Harrisburg. The budget is two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, paid via ERAP, the Emergency Rental Assistance to State Funds.
All right, motion's been made by Commissioner Priest. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded motion. All those, any discussion?
Yes, this was recommended by our Human Services Director, Randy Jaeger, and said this is a correct and proper allocation of funds for this project.
Just for a point of clarity, this motion will put it on the agenda for next week. This motion also will be on the agenda next week. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It'll be on the agenda next week. Commissioners, discussion and actions. Commissioner Hartwick.
I'm going to read a, a statement directly, and then following the statement, I have just one more action item, but I want to read this into the record. "On April second, I arrived at the Commissioners' meeting in a state unfit to serve. I take full responsibility for my actions and deeply regret letting down my constituents, colleagues, and family. Within minutes of the incident, I recognized its gravity and sought help. The very next morning, I entered an inpatient treatment program, determined to rise above this very public relapse after a long period of sobriety. I successfully completed a twenty-eight-day intensive rehabilitation program, and I know now more than ever that recovery is not owned, it's rented, and the rent's due every day. I'm fully committed to abstinence and the daily work required to sustain it. As a part of that commitment, I relinquished my county vehicle and vowed never to drive a county car again. Alcohol use disorder affects more than fourteen million Americans. Though it is often a deeply private struggle, I understand that as a public official, I owe the public full transparency and accountability. I want my constituents to know that I am engaged in a continuing care plan that includes trauma-informed therapy, intensive outpatient treatment, and a faith-based recovery program. Throughout my life, I believed in giving people who have made mistakes another chance, and I now humbly ask for the same grace. I believe we should not be judged solely by our lowest moments or our biggest failures. Our greatest strength can emerge from our deepest pain. I believe the best way to show the power of recovery, self-help, and community-based care is to continue in my role, to inspire others who are also battling alcohol or mental health challenges. While stepping back might seem like an easier path, I chose the harder one, to stay, to heal, and to attempt to lead by example. This disease has taught me humility, compassion, and the true meaning of gratitude." I promise I wouldn't do this. "I am forever thankful to my family for their unconditional love and to those who supported me through one of the darkest days of my life. True character is revealed in times of struggle. I will dedicate the rest of my life to earning back the trust and forgiveness of those I serve and to providing that, and proving that recovery, resilience, and redemption are not only possible but powerful. The best chapters are yet to come. Thank you."
Thank you, Commissioner Hartwick. You had, you had said you had an action item as well, so I'm sure that you
Sorry, it's a little tough to make that transition. Not tougher than four weeks ago, but tougher now. I, upon return, we've had a lot of discussion about the Dolphin County Human Services Building, and I know it's been of great concern. I've heard those concerns, and, you know, we are making this the top priority. I just want to let you know that we've been in contact with professional service folks to be able to ascertain information for the ESCO. We were on the phone early this morning, ensuring that both blueprints, former electric bills, and all of the information is exchanged in a way that does not provide barriers, but answers, to be able to get the kind of information we need in order to move this project forward, at least from the ESCO side. I believe, based upon our update, there's a number of both construction management, construction management folks that are interested. I think there's engineering and architect, architectural proposals. My interest is not in who we hire, but having those professional services in place to be able to get real cost estimates based upon this project's scope and intent. I am going to stay focused like a laser on ensuring that our timelines are met, and we make sure this valuable project that could result in significant savings for this county and the ability for us to collectively provide the same kind of help that I sought is available to the residents of, of this county, as well as employees who are living in a really, and working in a difficult environment, the ability to not worry about boundaries of dollars, but the ability to get the service help and the help to people in the way they need it, when they need it. They don't care what the barriers are, they don't care where the money comes from. They want an assessment and the ability to get the help that they need. We need to do everything within our authority to be able to do that, and you have my full public commitment to make this project a priority and my accountability for it. Thank you."
Thank you, Commissioner Hartwick.
Yeah, I want to start by welcoming Commissioner Hartwick back. Let everyone know that I had a lengthy, private conversation with Commissioner Hartwick. What we discussed, I will keep private. I wholeheartedly believe that this Board of Commissioners is a stronger board and will be able to accomplish many things if we are an actively engaged three-member board, working together for the betterment of our residents. I also have some updates within the county to follow up on, including tech port. We do continue to do our due diligence on the Human Services Tech Port Project. Very aware of the leases for those departments that are going to be coming up at the various locations, and that's part of the plan to have all these departments under one roof, the one-stop-shop concept, and we will continue to provide weekly updates to keep the residents up to speed on where we are on this topic, and I thank Commissioner Hartwick for that update as well. Some things I, a couple of these I've mentioned before, but I think it's important to just go over again. There's some great things happening here in Dolphin County. All we've been hearing about lately is the negativity that's occurred over the past sixteen months, and I want to highlight some of them right now. Our Dolphin County Parks and Rec Department was named the Agency of the Year in the state of Pennsylvania, and had over nine hundred thousand visitors to our county parks last year. Our Solid Waste and Recycling Department, last month, had their annual shredded event, brought in over seventeen and a half tons of paper that was collected and shredded. Our Veterans Affairs Office is hosting their annual Memorial Day Breakfast on May twenty-second for veterans, and it'll be at the Lower Swatara Fire Hall in Lower Swatara Township. Millersburg Borough just rededicated be at the Lower Swetera Fire Hall in Lower Swetera Township. Millersburg Borough just rededicated their town square. The Sycamore Homes Affordable Housing Project in the city of Harrisburg opened just last week. The Hershey Company is investing $1 billion in supply chain and manufacturing here in the region. And the longest-serving president in the history of Harrisburg Area Community College is retiring this summer. Special thank you to Dr. Ski for the work that he has done during his tenure, and the impact he has had on tens of thousands of young men and women. Thirteen-time AHL champion Hershey Bears are currently in the playoffs again, and they're facing off against the Lehigh Valley Phantoms, currently trailing two games to one, and they're in their quest for an unprecedented three-peat. The Harrisburg Senators' baseball team has embarked on another season at FMB Field at the beautiful City Island. And lastly, I've never done this before, but I've received a written statement from State Representative Tom Haffey of the 106th Legislative District, in which he has asked me to read into the record on his behalf. I will read this letter verbatim to accurately reflect his statement. "At last week's Dolphin County Commissioners' meeting, a Swetera Township Commissioner made false and politically motivated statements about my record of support for the township's K-9 program. These claims are not only misleading, they are an attempt to rewrite history for personal political gain. The facts speak for themselves. In August of 2017, I submitted a formal letter to the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners supporting Swetera Township's request for local share funding to establish a K-9 unit. While the township initially requested $85,000, the county ultimately awarded $13,000 towards the effort. I didn't stop there. I worked with District Attorney Franchardo to help secure nearly $60,000 in violent crimes task force funds to further support the program. Demonstrating my personal commitment to public safety, I also contributed $1,000 to the Swetera Police K-9 Fund through my family business, Rescue Beverage Distributors, a tangible show of support that speaks louder than politically motivated accusations. To suggest that I would take or tolerate punitive action against the very community I was elected to serve is not only baseless, it's an insult to my proven record of advocacy and results. Between 2017 and 2022, when I represented Swetera Township, I helped secure several hundred thousand dollars in local share funding for vital township projects, including emergency operations facilities, sidewalk infrastructure, and major park upgrades. The Commissioners' remarks are part of a troubling pattern, one where facts are ignored, records are distorted, and public meetings are used to advance personal political agendas instead of the public good. Like many candidates, I work with professional consultants. Trying to link unrelated allegations in an attempt to smear my campaign is dishonest and desperate. I remain focused on delivering real results, not political theater. Signed, Tom Haffey." And that's all I have for my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest. I want to share that last night, we were in this room for our Prison Town Hall meeting that took place. Prison Town Halls happen quarterly. I believe this is our fifth Prison Town Hall that took place last night. So really excited to see that continue, and had some really great ideas about how we can continue advancing it and and creating even more structure around it in the future. But just for those that don't know, it's really an opportunity for more transparency, for access, as prison admin is here as well, and many of the prison board members show up. And it's more of a Q and A than a comment, and so an opportunity for interaction and question and answer, for free flow of information, and even a little bit of collaboration around ideas. So our next one, for those of you interested in something like that, is Tuesday, August 19th, and it'll be in the hearing room here at 6:00 PM. So I want to encourage you, if that's something you're passionate about, to consider coming out. I want to begin with just saying that I received a note from Cleveland Cliffs that they're expecting approximately 68 salaried positions and 491 bargaining unit positions to be subject to layoff on June 30th, 2025. So we're looking at a pretty massive challenge to our community in Steelton. The announcement of these layoffs is deeply disappointing, not only for the 559 workers and for their families, but for the entire Steelton community in our county. The Steelton Plant has been a historic landmark and an anchor for good, union-paying jobs for generations. Its closure is not just the loss of a facility, it's the loss of a legacy. This news reflects the broader uncertainty facing our economy, an environment where global market pressures and volatile demands make long-term planning incredibly difficult for industry. As we evaluate the closure, we must also remain mindful of the role that tariffs and trade policies coming from Washington may have played into the destabilization of domestic production. These workers deserve our full support, and we will continue pushing for every resource available to assist them in the weeks ahead. I also want to take a moment to congratulate all of our university graduates across Dolphin County, whether you're earning your degree from HAC, Harrisburg University, Penn State, Harrisburg, or another institution here in Dolphin County or elsewhere. We're proud of your hard work and your dedication. This is a tremendous milestone, and we're excited to celebrate your achievements with you. The future is bright. Go make your mark. If you're looking for a job in public service, we have plenty of openings. Please send us your resume. Please browse our site and apply online. I especially want to acknowledge our Chief Clerk Eric Hagerty, who graduated this past weekend from Pitt Business Program with an MBA. Congratulations, Eric. Also, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. As my wife is an elementary educator here in the Harrisburg School District, I want to take a moment to acknowledge her and all the other great educators across Dolphin County. This Teacher Appreciation Week, we celebrate the incredible educators who pour their hearts into shaping the minds of future and futures of our students. Teachers do far more than deliver lessons. They inspire, support, and uplift, often going above and beyond without recognition. In every classroom across our county, they create safe, welcoming spaces where students are encouraged to grow, question, and dream. We are deeply grateful for their dedication, resilience, and the lasting impact they have on our communities. There's no more Commissioner discussion or action. We'll move on to correspondence. I'll direct Mr. Pease to receive the correspondence. We will now move on to a time of public participation. I believe we have a sign-up sheet.
Commissioner, can I make a comment before you start?
Certainly, yeah.
I'd just like to make a brief comment in response to the comments Commissioner Douglas made regarding the former business. I do realize that one of the individuals named in the letter that was discussed provided a response on his own. But I just want to clarify that both of these items have been subject to an RFP or RFQ process in recent years. Item one, which is the county's audit, was RFP'd by a previous controller, Tim DeForre, and out of complete transparency, our current auditors were not chosen through that process. However, the firm that was chosen was unable to, well, they did complete it, but the first year that they performed the audit, there were significant problems, and they had to actually consult with another company to help with that audit. All counties aren't created equally. Counties can be very complicated. Ours is complicated. We have many component units and, you know, other entities that make our audit pretty difficult. So the county actually moved back to the current auditor, Zelenkovsky Axelrod, the next year. And then the number two was actually an RFQ that I put out in 2022, in which ZA was our low bidder. So I just wanted to make those clarification purposes.
Thank you for those clarifications.
Thank you.
Certainly. We'll now move on to public participation. This is a three-minute cap. Just a reminder, we are being livestreamed, and I will go off the list, and after the list is complete, then we will move on to those who maybe didn't get a chance to sign up on the list. We'll begin with Pamela Parsons and Gene Stilp will be on deck.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Pamela Parsons. First of all, while he isn't here, I would like to thank Eric Hagerty for recognizing about 10 minutes before this meeting started that it might be full and asking staff if they would use the overflow room so there would be enough seating for all the guests who would be here today. And I'd appreciate it if you would pass that along to him, since he is not here. I would also like to thank him for his explanation at the beginning of the meeting as to why he was recusing himself from this entire process, and his detailed explanation of that. I would also like to thank him for the slightly better agenda that we have here today. I noticed that some of the things were more detailed than we had in the past, and I appreciate that. Moving from that, I would like to thank Ms. Bellamy for her presentation about the gaming grants. That was really helpful. But I would, my criticism of that is that that was just a presentation, and I would like to have had that information either in hard copy and linked somewhere so that we can go and look at it, particularly the color coding and the grants that were not awarded. And it would be wonderful if the tourism grant process could be shared in a similar way. Maybe sometime in the future, these could even be during work meetings before you actually vote on them. Also, thank you, Commissioner Priest, for highlighting the mental health needs of our incarcerated population at DCP, and we, that space is the largest mental health provider in the county. And mental health matters for all, both those who are residents there and for those who work there. Finally, Commissioner Juggis, thank you for talking about the Prison Town Hall last night, and encouraging folks to show up at future ones. I know that much of our focus was on reentry last night, but I think a return to a sort of structured event with time for people to bring forth whatever they have will make those better. I also appreciate the Cleveland Cliffs highlighting that. When I first read that article in the paper, I felt what the impact of that will be for our county. And finally, thank you to Commissioner, for Controller Bateman for explaining about the two items under old business, the RFP and the RFQ, that helped to make it more transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next up, we have Gene Stilp, and then it does say John Bay on deck, but he might have just thought this was a sign-up sheet when he was coming in, because I don't believe he's here anymore, so. You're good? Appreciate it.
First of all, Commissioner Harwick, congratulations on taking the first major step in the evaluation and moving forward.
State your name for the record, please.
Gene Stilp, Bishop Creek Valley. Congratulations, Commissioner Harwick, on taking the first major step. And it's hard for everyone to thank you for serving yourself, and serve as an example for a lot of other people in this county and across the region. So good luck. Go for it. Secondly, we have on the agenda today the congratulations for the, for the Commission, excuse me, for the professional, professional people who work at the prison, prison employees, and the members of the unions, et cetera, the leadership there. And I just want to proactively remind them that they are the, that they are in the firing line for what Constellation Energy wants to do in regard to the evacuation of prisons during any kind of evacuation plan. They are one of the prisons that will have to be evacuated if there is a, in a, an event at the, at Unit One, at Three Mile Island, and also in conjunction too with the 3,000 members, excuse me, 3,000 employees, excuse me, 3,000 inmates, and also the staff at the federal prison too, that is in line for evacuation in the case of an emergency. So people shouldn't forget that what these people have to prepare for and what they're in, what professionals serve in prisons, what they may have to do. That's why I'm opposing the reopening of Three Mile Island. It's one of the reasons. Lastly, it's not often that you, that you often see something happen in real time that brings to mind what you're dealing with. Four to six years ago, you had the meltdown of Three Mile Island, and now, and now at Unit Two. Right now at Unit One, as everybody knows, there's new workers down there trying to prepare for some kind of reopening, which again, which I oppose, which we oppose. But the key thing here is you have actual workers working there. Just the other month, February 11th, it has come out that there was a fire at Unit Two, the meltdown reactor, which, which had to be controlled, a minor event. And I gave you the report of that in front of you, page five to seven. And the other thing too is that I wanted to know if the, our emergency services has been notified, that had been notified that at the, when it was happening, and two, if you were notified by emergency services at that time. No matter how small the event has to be, has to be looked at in that light. Here we have a, we have a completely damaged meltdown reactor reaching out from the past, and the possibility of emitting, emitting radiation, not only into the public, which they were monitoring for, didn't see any at that time, but also to the actual workers at Unit One who were down there working. So the other question is, were they notified in real time what they might have been exposed to and evacuated at that time? So that's it for today, but thank you so much for listening, and we'll go from there. Thank
Thank you, Gene. Next up, Tom Connolly. I do not believe I see Tom in the room. All right, that is the extent of our list. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment, who did not sign up?
Ralph Rodriguez, 19th Street, Harrisburg, PA. Great to see you all, Commissioners. Just coming with some great news. Yesterday, as a Harrisburg City Councilman, we actually achieved our first victory in collaboration with Dolphin County Recycling and Solid Waste, our director, Ms. Kelly Magano, Stephen Welsh, Sr., our sanitation enforcement officer for the city of Harrisburg, and of course, the great Pete Baltimore, the enforcement officer for Dolphin County. We actually, so on March 9th, an individual was caught illegally dumping, and we took it from the spot where we caught them all the way through the enforcement. And Judge Yurudia actually gave him the fullest extent of the law with a harsh warning that no longer will we tolerate any illegal waste, illegal dumping, or just the general ebb and flow of, I'm a developer, I'm gonna dump this in the alley on the late night. So a great victory for Dolphin County, for the city of Harrisburg, and I just wanted to put that on the record as a great victory, and just look forward to the many more accomplishments to come, to put that to a cease here in Dolphin County.
Thank you for your work, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up. You know that this illegal dumping is a pet peeve of mine, has been for years. So people, if you see something, say something. Hundreds of tons of illegally dumped materials put in the city of Harrisburg every single year, and we're tired of it. We got residents like Councilman Rodriguez that are doing something about it. Thank you for communicating with the proper authorities, and we're going to go to the MDJ and Kelly Wolf-Magonal's office. We're going to put an end to it.
Absolutely. And I just wanted to put on record, our next cleanup will be this Saturday on Third and Verdbeck. So anyone in Dolphin County who want to play their role and put some gloves on and lend a helping hand, they're more than welcome. We'll be there at 10:00 AM till 12:00. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Robert Williams, a lifelong Dolphin County resident and voter. I'm here today to raise urgent concerns about what appears to be a breakdown in transparency, accountability, and the preservation of evidence involving multiple county departments. On February 24th, 2025, a serious incident occurred in the lobby of the Dolphin County District Attorney's Office. On February 26th, I filed formal complaints against several sheriff deputies and Assistant District Attorney Mike Parabella regarding their conduct during this incident. Two days later, on February 28th, I received confirmation from the County Criminal Investigation Division that they had opened a formal investigation. In addition, I submitted right-to-know requests, Act 22 requests, within 48 hours to multiple departments, including CID, the District Attorneys, and the Department of Public Safety. On clear, excuse me, they were on clear notice that the surveillance footage was material and needed to be preserved. Despite these actions, it is now, May 7th, and I have received no updates whatsoever from CID. Even more alarming, I have since been informed by Mr. Bender and Director Jeffrey Enders that this surveillance footage from that day, the very footage tied to an open investigation and subpoenaed for court, was erased under a standard 30-day retention policy. This is not a clerical error. This is not a clerical error. This is a systemic failure to preserve material evidence after a county was actually, was on actual and constructive notice. It directly undermines due process and may constitute spoliation of evidence under state and federal law. Commissioner Douglas, your leadership has emphasized transparency and challenging institutional neglect. This is precisely the moment that calls for that commitment to be put into action. Today, I respectfully call this Board to initiate an internal investigation into how and why this evidence was destroyed after formal complaints, a CID investigation, and legal preservation requests. I also formally request an independent review by the Pennsylvania Attorney General's Office to assess whether legal or civil rights violations have occurred. And lastly, enact the county-wide surveillance preservation policy that halts all automatic deletions when any complaint, investigation, or legal process is pending. I am respecting, I am respectfully asking you to act. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Williams, quickly, can I, can I, can I give you my card? Can you send me your comments, the emails? I wrote them down, but I just want to make sure I get them in, in, in there. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, Roger. Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by me, Roger.